What's that, E.?
We're real, though. Let's get where it starts. We're real.
Why the first page was not supposed to be printed?
I don't do it.
That's why I have standard this morning, not what I'm paying. Technically, each one, y'all can disregard.
I think they done. And those were the boys from those.
Here's. Not. They can't break that.
Is that okay? Next, he is brother. One on toast about five times. They're thinking he's gonna do it. Y'all do it till they got one through it. That was my idea. So this is what I can play.
How long does it take to watch the turning of figures? Medical stuff. I mean, like, November, you should have been ahead of them. Which is a good shot. So. Well, they said he had COVID. Although he had.
If these are going at the first page.
First thing. This regarding first page?
That was her list.
What?
We hear it is here. It's a ration.
For you.
BX insurance. Should we go? Equipment. Car election picture. Look the right place. The chapters. So that host is major. That's every. All the JP offices have one except precinct two. I think they're by stamp, something. Done precinct two by stamps. Jackie wanted to get rid of his, but his contract run out this year. So he's gonna be over there for one more year and then try to get rid of it. Steve Jones. I'm following this feeling.
So I'll be about ten. I'd tell us, meaning of the Rust County Commission to abort the order. It is February 21st. February 1st, 2021. It's 9:00 AM. Like this honorable Andy Benson leads in prayer. Please make any questions.
Father, we just thank you so much today for your goodness, for your kindness, for your mercy. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful weather that you've given us. Or we just pray that you'll be with this court as they make decisions for the best interest of our community. Thank you for your love and thank you most of all for Jesus. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and thanks to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Not only agenda to discuss, possibly approve, budget amendments and or transfer first. Maybe I guess this is about final sheet, flange it all up. Only transfer. Motion for Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Whitworth. All is in favor. All is opposed, motion passes. Number two, pre-approved, February 5th, 2021, Rust County payroll.
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion for Mr. Kirkendall, second from Mr. Galt. All in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Discuss possibly approved to accept the resignation of precinct four constable, Bobby O'Donnell.
Received that letter. Make motion for approval.
Motion for Mr. Whitworth, second for Mr. Gibson. All is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Discuss possibly approved to reappoint someone to the precinct four constable position.
Spoken with Mr. David Guy, and he's agreed that he would serve in that capacity for the two years for appointment. So I moved to appoint David Guy as constable precinct four. Second.
Motion for Mr. Whitworth. Is that Mr. Galt down there?
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Galt, all is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Number five, discuss possibly approved precinct three commissioner to hire a new employee.
I had a Mr. Booley retired that worked my inmate. I think that's a pretty valuable tradition. We're getting to the extent. Like, pretty darn. I'd like anything that most of the hires somebody.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Gibson. Second from Mr. Whitworth, any other? Like I say, I've been interested in seeing this through attrition downsides as far as some employees. And that's what I have told the county clerk and the district clerk. Hadn't changed my mind about that. All is in favor. All opposed. All right, number six, discuss possibly approved precinct two commissioner to advertise for bids for a one-half ton crew cab, four-wheel work truck.
The deal is on this, I have an old truck that I'm gonna be auctioning off later on this year. So I'll need to get a replacement. I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Kirkendall, second from Mr. Galt, any other discussion? All is in favor. All opposed. Motion passes. Number seven, discuss possibly approved except for marshal PD department, a canine, to utilize as a single purpose dog to the Rust County Sheriff's Department.
Think the sheriff is a radio. He'll still be in a little bit later.
I'm gonna pass on that for the time being. All right, moving on to number eight, read into the minutes that Terry Willard, Rust County District Clerk, has received from the County and District Clerks Association for Texas Certificate of Completion. For completing the required 20 hours of continuing education for 2020, as prescribed by section 51, 605 of the Texas government code. And you have a copy of her certificate there in your package. Move, we approve that. Second from Mr. Gibson, all is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. All right, number nine, discuss possibly approved replace weekday holiday. Should say part-time employee, shouldn't it? It's. There's McAnally at the Rust County Airport. You don't tell us anything about that?
No, we just lost our weekends and holidays guy that we always had, so. If y'all wanted to replace him, or we are advertised as a 24/7 airport. So without him, we would not be 24/7 anymore. Or without someone.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but all he gets is money put into retirement. There's no insurance benefits, nothing else.
Insurance, I believe it's $10 an hour for whatever hours he's able to work, that person.
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion for Mr. Whitworth, second for Mr. Gibson. All is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Let's go back to number seven, discuss and possibly approved to accept from Marshal PD Department, a canine to utilize as a single purpose dog to the Rust County Sheriff's Department. Sheriff, how are you this morning?
Doing well this morning, how are y'all?
Very well.
Sorry, I'm a little bit late.
It's all right.
When we hired the Kendrick Adams to be a patrol sergeant away from Marshal PD so he can work here at home, one of the things that we also were included in that package deal was Pollux, which is his German Shepherd, single purpose dog. We purchased him for $5. So I really feel that being able to utilize Pollux until we can start. He is six years old, so he's got a couple of years left under his belt. Being single purpose, they usually last a lot longer. Apprehension dogs usually don't because they start having hip issues and also back issues. Until we can start being able to purchase dual-purpose canines. I really strongly feel that the amount of traffic stops we're making, which is over 120 a week, that we could utilize this dog to being able to search out narcotics. If we ask for consent to search on vehicles, as you well know, if they deny consent, then that traffic stops over. If we have a canine unit through Rodriguez versus Florida, as long as we don't extend the traffic stop to a quote-unquote unreasonable time, we can ask or request that a canine unit respond. I would much rather have our own canine unit respond than another agency. Because when you start getting into asset forfeiture, then the less people that you you have to utilize, the more asset forfeiture stays at the agency, which we desperately need for additional equipment. Dogs are always a very, very good tool to use for law enforcement. I've been a canine handler for 16 years. My dog that I had in Agarosa County got $1.2 million out of a tar cash. So those are things that we like to use our narcotics dogs for, as well as our tracking and apprehension dogs. And at some point, I will come to you again in a year or so and request that we'd be able to go out and look for bids for purchasing additional canine units. Any questions about dogs?
It's six years old, you say?
Yes.
Nothing medical, nothing managed.
No, we just got a claim bill of health prior to him starting. So he is, all his shots are up, you know, all his vet records came with him. So we can see if there was any issues in passing, there was none. Heartworm's good, he was negative, so he's ready to go to work. I'm not a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gibson, second from Mr. Kirkendall, any other discussion? All is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
To discuss and possibly approve renewed lease agreement with Terry Dorsey for hiring a G9 at Rust County Airport. Anything you need to say on that?
Yes, sir.
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion for Mr. Whitworth, second for Mr. Gibson, any other discussion? All is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Number 11, discuss. This possibly approved to declare surplus items from the Rust County Courthouse Security. You got A, B, C, D, and E there. Brownwood shelf, light paper shredder, teal pencil sharpener, very short filing cabinet, a green tile filing cabinet.
Motion to approve items A through E.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Galt, second for Mr. Gibson, all is in favor. All opposed, motion pass. This, about this possibly approved following Commissioner Court Minister of December 2020, special meeting on December 3rd and 23rd, and regular meeting on December 14th, 2020.
I've read those minutes, now approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gibson. Second for Mr. Whitworth. All is in favor. All opposed. Number 13, discuss possibly approved following utility pipeline request. Atmos Energy Corporation proposes to place a 36-inch gas pipeline under across the roadway, canter 131, canter 132, canter 114, canter 134 north in precinct one.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Galt, second from Mr. Kirkendall, all is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. B is East Texas Telephone proposes to place fiber optic cable under across or along within the roadway of canter 314 in precinct three. C is East Texas Telephone Co-op proposes to place fiber optic cable under across along within the roadway of canter 3218 in precinct three. D is in precinct three, too. D, Mid Coast GMP, East Texas LP proposes to place 12.75-inch welded steel natural gas pipeline under across the roadway of canter 317 in precinct three, Rust County, Texas.
Motion for approval, please.
Motion for Mr. Gibson.
Second.
Second for Mr. Kirkendall, I mean, Mr. Whitworth. And then E, East Texas Telephone Co-op proposes to place fiber optic along within the roadway of canter 456 in precinct four. We need to vote on that. Yeah, all those others, all those other three, all in favor? All opposed. And then E.
Motion for approval on E. Second.
Motion for Mr. Whitworth, second for Mr. Gibson, all is in favor. All opposed, motion passes. Public comment, no action being taken. Sheriff, anything to?
Oh, lots of things going on. Obviously, last week was a very busy week for us. Get the opportunity and you see or anybody in the gallery or get the opportunity to see anybody that works at the Rust County Sheriff's Office, specifically investigators. They did an absolutely phenomenal job on just, I'm running out of adjectives. 25 hours straight is a long time for anyone to work. And they did it without complaint. And they were focused. And we brought a killer to the Rust County Jail. That's, that's very rare. And they should be batted on the back every chance somebody gets to see him. I can only do it so many times. But the community needs to know that this, these guys working extremely hard. And they bought into our system that we brought. And it shows, and that was a prime example. We also recovered a bunch of stolen merchandise the day before the murder that we ran down on foot. A guy went behind Kroger and stalled six part of the buildings behind that one guy and recovered some of the stolen merchandise. So they're getting out of the office and making things happen. Shaking the bushes, so to speak, and it's paying off. So please, if you have an opportunity to pat one on the back and tell them thank you, I appreciate it.
Sheriff, we appreciate, I know everybody in the community appreciates what y'all do as far as getting that solved as quick as you did. That's a big thank you to all of you.
You're very welcome.
Good job.
What we do.
Anybody else? There's a bill, there's a bill in the House and a bill in legislation that would basically deal with the Texas Association of Counties. You don't, you don't need to contact our people, particularly Brian Hughes, because he's chairman of the committee that one of those should go to. Unless they send it to Senator Bettencourt's committee, which they may do, from what I heard last week. I'm sure y'all realize that without TAC, we would hurt our educational opportunities and lack everything they do for us. The whole deal is around this thing about using public funds to lobby. And Sheriff, your organization needs to needs to be heard from, too.
And we have been, we've been talking quite a bit, a lot of the local sheriffs here in East Texas. We've been talking about it, obviously, I just came back from the sheriff's school. We're very well aware of that bill and also House Bill 88, which is, there's a bill in the middle of it that's trying to get rid of qualified immunity for all police officers. If that goes away, I'll be doing this by myself because no officer's gonna want to work thinking they're gonna be sued every time they put somebody in jail or write a ticket. You can lose your retirement, they can sue your retirement, they can take your vehicles, they can garnish you. The wages, it's absurd. Getting a TAC is absurd. In my opinion.
I agree with you. Anybody else?
Did you know the number on the House bill?
I've got it written down in there.
Andy, how are we, what progress we've made on our cards? Having the money on our cards for our employees.
As far as I know, everybody's got the card with money, yeah.
It's been put in like a week or so. I had a couple employees say they hadn't received their insurance card.
And not see their card yet. We'll contact if they have it and we'll get with National Family Care, they're the ones that issue those. But I know they've had some, some issues with their man. Back off the sky, having COVID. He's been in the hospital. Long time now, but I think they're catching up. Catching up.
Should each employee, even all ones, get a new card?
No, people that already have a card.
That one's still good.
They need, yeah, they need to keep that still good and they just replenish the money on it.
You're talking about the cap here playing not.
I was made an actual insurance card.
Is that correct? Is that correct? Insurance card.
Actual insurance card.
Oh, for Blue Cross.
Blue Cross Blue Shield, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I haven't heard any issues with that. Blue Cross, the new boys.
No, it's just a previous employee.
Well, they won't, they won't get one this year because there's, that's, there's no change at all. They, they need to keep the one that they've, they've gotten. Had in the past and they can call us and we can order them a replacement.
I don't think that's an issue. They, they gotten married and so they.
Oh, and that, yeah. Well, let us know, we'll, we'll follow up with Blue Cross rep. But there's big bureaucracy, you have to navigate through that.
Anything else? Okay, y'all got anything?
Yes, sir.
Everything good?
Everything is good. We're enjoying some, some slower time right now with gourmet, so.
I understand.
Just glad to take a walk this morning, enjoying some of the weather on the way over.
Y'all had a busy fall, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number fifteen, approve payment of bills. Andy.
Phone Express was for Jana, she got business cards and tent on her glass in her office.
Business cards in one?
Window tent. Oh, uh, we have paid for somebody who, like, the family didn't claim them. And so, uh, we pay for his cremation and transportation and autopsy. Then it found out he had money in the bank to pay us back, but then he paid us back four thousand instead of two thousand for his autopsy, so we had to give two thousand back to his estate, to the registry of the court.
And then one that went to forensic medical?
That was one Jana did.
Did they do an autopsy on the murder victim, Sheriff? Did he go to town or go to Dallas?
That I don't recall.
Have a motion from Mr. Gall. Second, second from Mr. Whitworth, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second, Mr. Whitworth, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, thank y'all for coming.
And I only have a resign that I'm getting, one for, I only had one and then I got one for all the time, right?
Hey, Andy, go away.